...and please. Mr. Mink, what you do?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I have everybody else on afternoon session. Looking forward to getting a lot of great information here. We have our great minds sitting over there. There are actually four of them. There are just two of them going to talk right now during the meeting. But before we do, let's approve the minutes of the October the 17th, 2017, right immediately. That motion, Carol?
Yes, my son.
Rowdy, second that motion. Is that along yesterday?
Yes.
Now, public comments, Bill? Will anybody sign in?
No.
I think everybody else is going to speak today. It's already on the agenda, so if you want to be necessary to sign in. Okay, the first report presentation we had is Mr. Gosling, Greg Gosling, the maintenance director, who's going to give us a maintenance update. Roland, Greg.
Couple things I want to bring up. We are doing a final payout for the football field. A final payout to... Did have a couple of change orders. We got all that straightened out. It's all going to be taken care of.
Now, is that on our financials?
Yes, Mr. Ellis will.
That was the add-on.
Okay, has it been added yet? What we have or is still going to add it before we get to that area?
The total I'm going to give you includes that amount.
Well, right now, we've got $1,161,928.3.
You're going to have $1,183,646.83.
Six forty. Would you say that number one more time? Okay, so when we get to that, you'll be... The difference is the final payment to the Southern High Carver?
Yes.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Greg.
So we've moved on from that. I do have some rather disturbing news on the Duval situation. That's not the news we were looking for. There's no fix for Duval. Mr. Mink, myself, and Mr. Ellis was at ZMM last week, and their engineers came in, and some engineers came in and looked at it, and then we even had some geologists come in. Basically, we're in a situation where we have to monitor this building, and I would suggest that we start out with a monthly monitor and look into agreement with ZMM, that the engineers come in to monitor it monthly, and then based on monthly after six months, adjust it accordingly. The building's settling and it's tilting, so to speak, so that's... There's just no fix for what he's saying. What we were told by the architect was that you're looking at about, what was it, $5.5 million?
Upwards of eight.
That was the question.
Yeah, upwards of eight million dollars.
Yeah, upwards towards... They would... If we were having the situation, my concern is for the students and for our employees as the top four, we really need to monitor that. I want to be going up in the ceiling and putting some baseline projections there and then be able to monitor. Maybe a little overkill right now doing monthly, but I think until we know what's happening, if nothing's happened in six months, if we're getting a quarter inch of movement or something like that, and maybe go back and do a quarter. But I think we really need to monitor this to start out. The crack monitor's in that stairwell where the crack has gotten wider, and we'll just see what's going on there. And the front part where the front steps are coming up, also have a crack in there that's gotten considerably wider. The thought is, from the geologist, is that possibly the backside of the hill, and then we shared some information with him that about the possibility of there being a septic system there also, but he seems to think it could be possible there's some water coming underground. It's called a situation. Worst case, if something was to happen, what we were told was that they would... The SBA would give us emergency funding for affordable, and then we'd have two years to come up with a plan. As to what we'd have to do.
Going back to this five and a half to eight million dollar figure, is that... What is that?
That's to tear it down.
Tear it down and rebuild it?
And have to rebuild and changing the foundation to a different type of foundation because of the soil content there. I would assume once you change to that point, which looks like down the road, our fix is going to be to tear it down, is that we would have to look at... We'll probably do soil sample, Bill. Tell us a little bit more about that core samples to see what's going on.
Well, I sort of have reservations about building and building backwards.
I, myself, conclude, I think you move on from that. You have to build to the other side or something. I don't know. I don't know that I'd want to put it right back in the same situation, so you could alter it to the other side and just make it up the other side. You don't have much room to go back because of the hillside. Most of them can go to the side because of the modular and the things that's over there.
When you talk about monitoring, this is something that the architectural firm or engineering firm would be monitoring the cracks?
The engineer would send us a report based on monthly reports. I'd get a monthly report telling me that, is there something that we should be concerned about, and if it's something immediately we need to do, we would do it.
But he did say the building is safe. There is an issue.
Currently it's safe.
But he said the building is structurally safe. There's, you know, no cause of concern for students or staffs, you know, safety as a result of what's going on. It's certainly something that we need to monitor over the next few months to see if there's any more movement.
But it dropped about five, five and a quarter inches is what the building's dropped from, based on the laser, whatever the laser measures with that.
Do we know for what time period that's occurred?
I know that since I came aboard, it's dropped about two inches because we had to put a filler underneath the rear door to bring the door jamb before that. I know that talking with some of the men, they cut doors off two inches at a time to seal them closed, so.
But it's dropped about five inches since it was built? And that portion was built when?
Different... There was three portions built on, which is kind of crazy that they were trying to find all the... We found some of the boot prints in 1978, '79, and '80, I think, were the three years that it was kind of...
That was part of the school block?
Yes, yes. But there was three different sections that were added to each section individually that went on.
Mr. Becker's going to be more...
And this problem affects all three of those sections?
Yes.
I agree with Greg. I think we need a monthly and outside and...
I mean, in any of this testing that has been done, have they given you a point at which the building becomes safe based on level of drop?
That was a question I've asked, and that's why I'm asking for a monthly, a monthly monitoring, primarily because I'm not getting a straight answer from them. At what point does it come inside?
Right. I mean, if we're at five inches of drop now from a region of construction, at what point does it become tip over danger?
Well, my problem is upstairs, where we've taken in some of the rooms, we've added two inches of concrete where the cracks from the wall, where it's pulled away from the wall. You've got steel beams that go across there. Eventually, the end of that beam's going to come out of that block and drop. That's my concern is that, and of course, I've been reassured that it is safe. That's the main thing. I want to be safe for these students and the faculty.
No, absolutely. I've done that.
But again, they're... What I've been told is that it's safe at this point, but I think in and into having some data, we go in the first month, here's our measurements, second month, we'll have some data to go along with, rather than I saw and guessing.
But we pretty much know that it's dropped two inches in at least two years.
Yes, two inches.
That's quite a bit in two years.
And they believe it's going to continue to settle because of the soil content? It's not going to settle and stop at some point?
No, I think because of the soil that it's on, and then if there is a possibility that we have some water that's underneath there that's washing out the soil. Again, the whole thing currently is safe, but it needs to be monitored.
Now, Greg, we're talking about this lower portion down near the highway, right?
We're talking about that portion. Also, we're talking about the cafeteria.
Yeah.
The cafeteria all the way down, that whole section, you know, that comes out there, back from the main building all the way down.
As you go back toward the main building, any damage?
I did find, and I pointed out to him the last time he came, he's been for three times already this year after calling back. On the upper portion towards the back where the road comes around, the very back portion, there's a section there that I found, and we were doing some wiring is how I found it, is up in the ceiling. It's got a crack up that way, all the way down through that whole corner. That's right, on the other side of the stairwell, towards the back like that.
As I recall, when they built that portion, I don't think they did any piling at all. I think you just have your general footer there and that's it.
That's...
As best I can remember.
And that's what they're saying is that it's sitting on columns. You have four columns, four major columns sitting there. The columns are staying currently. It's everything else that's settling down around them. But the concern is the columns, the columns were never driven to bedrock. So they have a tendency, like Mr. Baker said, it's over. At what point does it go?
Have they done any core drilling to see if there is underground water coming from behind?
We discussed that, the purpose of cord drilling, when we talked about that, and that brought the geologist in according to the person, ZMM. He really didn't think there was a purpose in it. Once we found out, what can we do if there is water? That's where the monitoring, basically monitoring it to see if something is going to happen. Spend this money on cord drilling, are you going to be able to fix it by knowing the strength of the team? And I think that's where monitoring comes in if we notice it. It may, maybe we'll stop right here for a couple of years and never move again, but I'd rather be a little over cautious than not.
Well, I think that monitoring is definitely something we have to do. I don't think it's an option, but my second concern is, worst case scenario, it becomes unsafe, we have to come up with a permanent space solution. I think the citizens of the county have consistently shown they're not willing to pass a bond to support additional construction of schools, and we don't have five to eight million dollars, nor are we likely to get it to put in a permanent replacement building. So, I mean, I guess if what you're saying to me is, if it is water that's contributing to the problem, there's no way to pull that water out before it hits the foundations to slow this down, because it seems like to me we're in a wait to see. We're going to use the space as long as we can safely do so, and then we have to come up with five to eight million dollars to remedy this problem, and we're not going to be able to do that.
It'd be a needs project, and we'd have to go to the SBA.
And we have to max that, though, what percentage? There varies now, if any at all.
Right.
But you're looking at, I mean, if that situation develops, you're looking at a two-year window? I mean, depending on when in the cycle for submission of the project, this need develops, and then if you get approval, that's in the fall of the year, but you don't get the money by the following spring, right?
Right.
Well, let's go the modular route. Now, that would...
There is emergency.
Yeah, that'd be on a temporary basis.
Right.
Right, and I think that's what, the two years, what Mr. Baker referred to, we have two years with the modulars to determine what we've got to do.
Well, always in the back of my mind is the fact that Duval, is the SBA going to fund Duval? You know, we always have that to think about because of the size of the school, and all we've talked about that, and that was obviously one of the reasons before, we talked about merging Duval and Midway together to meet their guidelines. Now, they say now they aren't as strict with the guidelines, but that may come into play one day, too. And I think that's a good idea, spend more money there. But I don't know what we did. I'm like, good, I have some different scenarios of how we address that. Jeff and I have just kept around the idea a little bit. In the worst case scenario, could we move those number of students somewhere else? Well, I don't know. Hamlet might be able to take a few more kids, but I doubt, you know, if we rerouted, because we go around that, we talked about that before, that we might have some kids over there that could go to Hamlet rather than Duval, but I don't think it's coming anywhere near the number we're talking about. Of course, Midway, we're trying to keep it as it is now.
You've got your cafeteria there, that's...
Oh, yeah.
It's not a matter of classrooms, it's...
Cafeteria services. Did you tell me eight rooms?
Eight classrooms, right?
Eight classrooms, yes. Eight classrooms and the cafeteria. Well...
Bring in four full cafeteria.
The old front lawn would be...
That sounds like Sage of Oog over there, doesn't it?
How many rooms are on the second level, Greg?
What is going on?
How many, no, how many rooms are on the second level?
On the second level, you have...
Five or six.
Are they eight?
Six, yeah.
Or on the... I thought you said there were eight.
We've got two on the other side of the cafeteria.
Okay, so you've got the cafeteria and two rooms downstairs, and how many upstairs? Five or six?
Five or six. Plus the elevators on that end.
Plus the elevator.
Of course.
I'm sorry, I just seem like I always bring you round to this thing.
Well, you normally bring solutions with you, too.
Well, I think we all agree what you're doing right now is to monitor it, monitor it often, and you pray that it doesn't win.
We were just floored, because we'd gone up there to meet with Dave Ferguson to talk about our needs project, our presentation for the RISD project, and before we get into that conversation, he said, I've got some bad news to share with you. And he said, there's no fix for the situation at Duval. And we were like, what do you mean, no fix? And that's when he said, we just have to start from scratch and tear that end of the building down. Anyway, that's...
Is that the only opinion we've gotten this year?
Yeah, today, yes.
All right, okay, Greg. Greg, you... I'll just throw it out there. I mean, we have one engineering firm, one architecture firm's opinion that the building is unsalvageable.
Currently, that's all we have.
Do you feel like it's worth the expense of having a different firm conduct the same assessment? It just strikes me that this isn't the first time this has happened, and there has to be technology that would remedy this problem at much less cost than five to eight million dollars. Now, maybe that's a pipe dream on my part, pie in the sky, but before I just say, look, okay, let's wait till it's unsafe and it falls over, and then we'll spend eight million dollars to fix it, seems to me it's worth getting a second opinion.
Even if it's three million, though, I mean, we couldn't do...
Well, a million's unattainable for us.
I think what Rowdy said, you see these commercials all the time, those, your houses settling, and come in and they squirt some kind of something underneath there.
You can level, you can level concrete. They have companies that come in and shoot and bring the concrete up, slabs up. The problem is being what's underneath it is the footer itself. And I'm open to, we can contact someone, have independent...
I mean, the answer may be, the answer we've got may be the right answer, but, you know, one to five to eight million dollar gamble on one opinion, I mean, I personally would like to know that someone independent of the organization that's done this at this point agrees that, for whatever reason, I don't care what the reason is, whether it's water, soil composition, sewer, that it's not worth spending a penny because we can't make this long-term safe and usable, but...
Why don't we do it, why don't you inquire as to what another firm would... What would it cost us for another firm to do what Rowdy's proposing? Then let us know what the cost would be, then we can go.
I know when I discussed this before about putting this in for MIP, like Paul did, is one of the things, you know, again, we go, let's see how much they deal with, but we couldn't find a contractor that would come in and tell us a price, what it would take to fix that before the... So many unknowns that they could not put a total price on it.
Why don't you inquire, who else might be able to give us some kind of, you know, idea of something?
And we have structural engineers involved.
Give us a figure, you know, let us know what that would cost us, and we can see if we want to go there.
Well, and at this point, ZMM should have all the data, and we have paid for collection of that data, so the underlying data, not just their opinions, but the underlying data as ours as well. And it seemed to me that if you put their underlying data and measurements, provided it to another firm, that it would save a lot of cost of someone else having to come out. It might not be near as expensive to get a second opinion as it was to get the initial opinion, but I agree with Steve that, you know, we don't want to throw good money away after bad, so if there's no benefit or the cost of having a second opinion, it's too great, it's something we wouldn't want to do, but I just can't help thinking, it has to be something to do to save a eight million dollar structure.
And even, even like Mr. Smith, even three million, how much money do we want to put in, even if we had it?
Well, but we don't have it to put in it, so if we can put a couple hundred thousand, a half million into this building and save it and get 20 more years of use out of it, at that point, does it become a good investment?
It's not going to last 20 more years. It's already crumbling. I'm afraid somebody's going to come in there, maybe another firm, and say, you know, I can save this building, I can save it for half a million, and do a shoddy job, and then we still lose it.
Well, you cover that with contracts and the bonding, which we didn't used to do. But Greg, make sure that we're covered that aspect now. I mean, I want to see all the options.
Right.
Why don't you do that, see if there are other alternatives, then share those with us and see if that's what we want to do.
All right, next one.
Can't get worse than that, can it?
Up at Midway, we done the Midway on our modular that we're replacing. Contacted surveyors and had it surveyed. Michael Porter, Porter Associates had done the survey, and he was working also with Joe, part of the Army Corps of Engineers. The survey went very quickly and very well, but the problem now lies with the Department of Engineers because now the survey has been done, but due to funding, they're not able to process a floodplain for us. We're like seven or eight that's back in line to get this done because of funding. So they don't know when Army Corps of Engineers is going to be able to give us our floodplain.
You're saying funding that the Army Corps of Engineer doesn't have to do it more quickly?
Correct, because of the funding that, I don't want to sit here and read it, so I'll pass this to you to read it, but according to the funding that they were waiting on some funding that this normally should not have been an issue. And then even Michael Porter said this is bad news. Other surveyors for the accuracy of the zones, we're in a queue with the FEMA queue, FEMA doesn't... We're not, we're never in a hurry. He's even asked if we agreed to pay three times the price could we get it done, but again, they're not, they're not moving on that. So I don't know what point we're going to even be able to get the Army Corps of Engineers final say on the flood area based on the elevation that we provided them. I'm suggesting that we move, if you, where we talked about the flood area, we talked about it once before, move it up on the opposite end, going on and advertising for the building, for the replacement building. You'll take about 15 feet of the, of the actual, where the playground is where they have a basketball court. It's kind of like a full court floodgarden. You'll take about 15 feet of that, you can relocate that basketball to the side. I think that's our option. We know it's not in a floodplain according to the existing one, and not wait longer than we wait whether to try and get this platform done.
But even though, see, if you propose to do that, you still have to get a permit to do that, right?
We get the permit because it's not in the flood zone. My next process is going on, getting the permit, and then advertising out for the modular to start the process.
You're assuming you can get a permit.
Okay. Now, is the proposed cost of this already taken out of this? Or is that going to further cut into our small amount?
The estimated cost is between, what I've previously, what I've gotten so far for the replacement, is seventy to ninety thousand dollars.
I was going to break that to you at the end of my presentation.
So that would come out of the $111 or $112 that we currently don't have allocated for emergency building projects?
Yeah, you took my closing remarks.
So we'd have $30,000 for the remainder of the year to take care of any unexpected maintenance projects that come up?
Yes.
It's not enough, is it, Greg?
Scary.
Well, you got to consider, when I did the budget, I took money from his budget.
You took money from me, so.
You don't have as much as you did last year. And we'll talk about the financial part a little bit more. So right now, are you, what is your next step? I mean, aside from waiting on the Corps of Engineers, are you...
My next step would be go to the courthouse and get the permit.
Get the permit.
To install that building on the upper side of that, and then once I got the permit, just shoot it out and paper it.
Let me ask you, how much does it, is it costly, the permits, to get free from the school board? I mean, so it wouldn't cost you anything to make sure that you could get that permit for the other relocation?
Let me, let me share this, because Greg and I haven't had a chance to talk. I didn't even mention this to you. I just recently had a conversation with the principal, Mrs. Hoover, and I was sharing with her what Greg's just shared with the board, and according, according to Mrs. Hoover, she and her staff, as well as others over in the community, are concerned about losing even a portion of their basketball court, and would, would rather limp along with the situation that we had and wait to get the work that we need done from the Corps of Engineers. So I just want to throw that out there that we may, you know, we may get some feedback or something.
That's why I was saying, Mr. Bruce and I, when we were down there when we had the LSIC, even if they want to, if they'll improve the location, I just feel like this is going to be so high up, it's still not going to be feasible to put affordable upon that many blocks.
If you're down there, because it was well over my head.
Yes.
Where we were standing, where the last index comes in right now, you know, the one, so we're talking about putting it beside it. The bottom of that was about two feet over my head standing there, where the existing one is. So, and then whatever the floodplain comes in, you have to be 24 inches above there, right? So, you know, we don't know how, how that would be. But I would just say if you could be sure, because I agree with Mr. Mink, that there would be kickback on going into that basketball area, and I understand that, but if we could at least know that if push came to shove, we could do that, and had a permit, there's no cost involved, then we can try to find out more about, you know, the other location.
I sent Michael an email this morning to see if there's any movement, if there's been any movement this week. I haven't got a requirement, so we're still checking. Moved to the top of the line. I don't know.
Do you think the, if you, the cost of putting in either location, would it be cheaper to put it up, as it is obviously?
It's certainly cheaper on that block. And the audience itself that existing only between the two modules there now, we just connect directly to that, a lot, a lot cheaper, and the ramps, we'd have to deal with, nothing much we'd have to deal down there.
But it does have the straw boxes, if we could point it out there.
Well, we could extend it on towards the library, 15 foot, with more concrete.
Is that fence where the boundary is?
Yeah. That's the one that's underwater.
Forget about that. Well, I'm just saying, with the board, does own all of that property, the library does own it, do you agree? You just pull a good name.
It is, it's on fire.
Mr. Mink, myself, and Mr. Ellis, we're met with, we feel pretty good about our needs about this, and we're open. We'll get, hoping I'll be able to give you some good news about that.
Is that, Rubs? Are these projects, that's Rubs?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you recall how much our match is on that?
$10,000 as well, we're matching on that. And that's the other thing, is we're taking also 138,000 for sewer plants, you know, we're putting in part of that money.
I mean, so of the existing capital improvement money we have, and Ray's going to probably talk about this, both of those will be subtracted from that. both of those will be subtracted from that? The roof project and the sewer project, right? I'm not going to talk about it anymore until Ray gets up to it.
Well, that's pretty much what I've got. I just thought that we'll plan on doing some more. I still think we'll start the monitoring process and then we'll get some end of term in here.
You say on our agenda today, we're going to have the final payment to Southern Hydrocarbon for the football field work, right? Architects, everybody's signed off on that and all that young stuff, all the jump berets and jumper room and all that.
Ray's signed off on it, good to go.
They had a per, you and Jeff, right?
A great big P, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Greg, you mentioned the soccer, the road down to the soccer.
As you all may recall, last week, Mr. Plumlee came and addressed the board with several soccer related concerns or, I guess, requests. One of which was to realign the road going down to the field. So I think Greg will talk about that here and say it. The other was to add dirt and seed to the soccer field on the concession stand area. So those were the two things I think he's going to maybe talk about this too.
Ray, you may have come around on this side. That thing's finicky sometimes.
I was going to say, you surely don't want me to reach up there and turn it on. That's not happening.
Maybe Ron can reach up there for it.
There we go.
There you go.
Can I get up on my shoulder?
I knew you. The light just went out on it, do you turn it on or off?
I have instructions, man, you know, I.
We don't want you to pull anything.
I'm not certified on that machinery.
For us shorter people, we use a wooden spanner.
For Tom's, I've used Tom's before. Vonda, we did Tom's, that's a good one. In my classroom, I find it on the desk.
Right.
At least when you wait on the phone, it play music and stuff.
Whistle.
Usually people don't like my music, you know, I can't.
I could say.
I don't know.
Pierhead's going.
Two tick clocks, there we go.
Desktop is most untidy.
I know what to say.
Greg Keats-Nudlin, I thought you were going first, right? I thought you were going first.
Yeah, that's what I said. I didn't come in here, I would have this all set up.
I figured, I knew that's what you all were talking about.
I thought you wanted me to get up. I didn't know you wanted me to go first.
What I looked at is, I don't know if you're going to see this real well, but what I looked at was putting a road in there to where we talked about where a bus can come down and be able to turn into it and extend it out into the field where the bike of the bus was dragging and all that stuff. This is pretty much what I looked at. These are, I don't know if you can see right in here, it'll be this part of the road. It's forty feet from here down towards, and that pole's on the other side of the road. There's a forty-foot road here what I was looking at. This is a little high right here, so that's not, not too bad. And this is the other side where we're coming across there. If you look in this area here, you've got about three and a half feet that you would have to fill in this area here and then come in by. One of the things that, one of the things that's going to be different is when we go along the edge here would be, right in here would be where your road would come down at. And you can slant it back. You're going to go over here quite a ways that you'll have that. So that's kind of what we looked at. We went out and laid it out and got some measurements on it and done some things. And what I've come up with that, on a gravel road type part, is that based on the amount of field that I calculated that I felt likely would need, you're looking at forty ton of field dirt, it's roughly about a thousand, one hundred dollars. And you come in there, once you come in there and you walk that in with a dozer, you're looking about thirty ton of number two limestone, which is a bigger limestone, which is about six seventy-five, sixty ton of number fifty-seven limestone, thirteen fifty. And then if you were to rent the dozer for a week for free equipment through the school board, you're looking at basically around nine hundred and fifty dollars. Total for it was about four thousand seventy-five dollars if you do it yourself. Kind of do it in the house, probably, on trucking out, you're looking ten to twenty thousand. This is just gravel. This is not blacktop. This is just gravel road, working it in there and making it come out where you can get in and out of there. As far as the dirt, it'd be just a matter of twenty-two fifty a ton to haul. That's what the topsoil is, if you want to haul the topsoil. Or the lower part, which is to cover up some dirt or the gravel and over there. Pretty much roughly about the, what you would look at with, you know, if you wanted to create a a road in there and make it, make a people where you can get in and out of there.
Greg, let me ask, I looked at your pictures, but I'm not sure I understand where the road would go. Are you proposing to basically eliminate both of the little triangular roads that go in there now and have a brand new road that comes off of the blacktop somewhere between where the two existing roads are and then comes at an angle so they can award the soccer goal?
Where it's going to come in, the first one, the first road, you come across the bridge, that will be blown away.
Okay.
So you go up, you're going to use part of that second road that comes up in an angle up out there. That would be blown off. What you're looking at is taking a forty-feet road that's straight down there where you can have one lane come out this way, one lane that way. So that's what you're doing, the forty-foot road down there. And then once you get down there, you return and go, place ball, ball, ball.
If there's just one road opposed to two, right?
Maybe two lanes.
Yeah.
But you're talking about still taking it straight off the existing road, straight down to the soccer complex, not angling it?
No.
Well, that's the shortest distance, I guess, if it comes straight off. Less material, et cetera.
Material, plus if a bus was coming up there, they can swing out and turn right down like that. That's probably one of the forty-foot roads. And then if you're coming out, you have the option, when you're coming out, you know, you come out now, you've got to either come out that one road to go up, or you've got to go up and then turn around and come by.
Yeah.
So you come out now, you come out, and then you'd be able, which way do you want to go? Just the standard road. And taking it out to where it's not so steep, I mean, you're looking at, it's going to be, once you taper it out, it's going to be fairly.
But the entire new road would basically be between where the two existing roads hit now at the soccer field? Okay.
That'll get us far enough away from the bridge to allow the swing in and out without interfering with the bridge, so.
You said that's with your people going to this work?
You have a dozer operator, you experiment a week?
I mean, the dozer is for a week, and then if you go over a week, it's like a hundred thirty-seven dollars.
You have an operator?
We have operators, you know, many different people. This is not something, this is something that would have to be done in some way.
Well, we're just trying to get, I think anybody's pretty much in agreement that that's where the dozer should be, you know, that was said to be somewhere. So we're just trying to get an idea to make it, do that.
Now, it might be off of two thousand, I'm giving you some pretty rough estimates here.
I understand that, I understand. But, you know, if we're going to hit more than Ray, you know, apparently we're going to have to be watching these dollars we have to receive. But four, five thousand dollars roughly, you know, roughly. Now, pavement, is pavement at one of these days? Do you have any idea what that?
One of these days, when we're paving the high school, maybe we could come down and pave that a little bit.
You might have any idea what it costs to pave that? Do it just to the foot of the hill?
He would have to, I'd have to, I don't know, about asphalt, four inches. First time, most asphalt now is only going down two inches thick. But the original one should be about four inches thick, and the proper rock base on it.
I mean, so we're talking just from the top of the hill down to where it levels off, right? But that's further on down the road than that?
Yeah, that's where we need paving at Amla and all those other places, maybe we do a little extra and throw it in there.
Okay. Now, as far as the soccer field itself, can we conceivably do that work without a great expense, your people?
I mean, you're talking a lot of time. If what we're talking about, and what I'm understanding on that, which was a little confusing when we were up there, the hearing was very bad. But the first part I thought was down by the concession stand is filling in where rock, where a bunch of rock was. I'm not sure if we're talking about that, we're talking about actually up on the hill.
Lane surface, as we talk about.
It's low. Last year, they worked some work on that.
Yeah, they put some field dirt.
I'm talking about, because I know Mr. Limmel and I, we kicked this idea around, you know, that we, if we could obtain our own topsoil, maybe down from the riverbank somewhere, bring it up there, put it on that area of the field, then sew it ourselves.
You're not going to get topsoil from a riverbank, you'll get river, you'll get river gravel and everything else in there. That's not the sort of water we want to put on a football field.
At the end of football field, right, you're off, it's what, two hundred yards to the river? I mean, I'm not saying it will be some set.
You could scale it off the top, you'd have to have a dozer or something scale it off the top, you know. You wouldn't want to go down too deep, because then you, then you don't have topsoil, you've got mud and everything.
I don't know how much, you know, there's a lot of land out there if you just took the top six inches out of it. But I mean, I'm just asking, is that, because otherwise, you know, because I'm reluctant to, or kind of get the impression here, we're not going to be out contract to having all this work done by other people to come in and do stuff. And is it feasible for us to be able to correct that, that, those low areas, and then seed it ourselves? I mean, if the answer's no, then, those are the two.
Plumlee, I mean, I don't care if we've got a dump truck now, we can haul it in there. But to take the men, I've got five men, to take them in, I need to do that. And I need them for, you know, putting doors up and fixing things at school. Unless we're done in the summer, very, I mean, it's going to be tough to schedule for my men to do it, so.
Well, unless they do it like on overtime or something.
Right, right. I mean, if we're done that, I'm sure, you know, they would probably, they're probably going to do that even through the weekend. But currently, it's just, it's just man and labor.
I understand. It's not something you want to do at this time of the year anyway. You'd have to wait till spring.
But you still would want to do this. You wouldn't want to break it into the spring either. I think we saw that when Mr. Plumlee died. It was a mess out there trying to get the grass to grow.
So when would you do it, in the summer?
I mean, I, yeah, I think you're going to have to do it as quick as the weather would break.
As early in the spring as you can.
As early as the spring you could do it. Because if you don't, by the time you get ready for your soccer season or the practice, whatever, it's going to be just straw and grass. And then the first game you have is going to be muddy man.
Last year, they had that barricaded off at end. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The first games are the last week of April.
Okay, and we're talking about the youth league, not the high school league. But the youth league goes out there and plays. What, when was the challenge?
Last week of April, usually.
So last year, what they were forced to do is block that area off, taped off, and they played on the balance of the field. That, I mean, even if you were able to get it done early in the spring, you're probably not going to get there and be playing on it. But the youth league would have to, you know, they're going to have to accommodate in some way like that, like happened last year. So that come fall, ideally, the high school team would be able to play on the whole field. The way I kind of envision it.
I think you're looking at a different area too. The area that you fenced off was just a section that was done. I think what we're talking about is all, the whole field. So, you know, you would have to look at, uh, youth league.
I'm thinking if you're up on top looking down, you can see the, up towards the concession stand area, you can see bare areas.
And I don't think you're going to continue to see that because all that in there is filled with earth. So, you know, everything that was brought there was brought in as field, but you're going, it'll, it's settling.
I think Mr. Plumlee, we have that clarified by him. But I think that's what he was talking about. That that area down there at that end was low and water would sit there. And, you know, if you get up and you look at it from above, you can see where there's a bare end. He may have been talking about a greater, you know, amount of the field, but that's what I took it from him.
Greg, Greg, did you all go there and dig up a water line or something?
We dug up a water line on the opposite side of it. We didn't go in the field. The actual water line comes out, comes across that field. But we were able to go to the backside and found it there where we could stay off that field.
Mr. Plumlee, we were just talking about a area inside the fence or maybe forty by forty or something like that. It's not a big area, but, I mean, there's just water standing down there on the lower end of there.
Yeah, there was one, they had a whole day of games this season where there's eight or six, eight or nine teams that came, the girls, and it rained really heavy and they had to abandon the final few games because it had pooled so badly around the penalty spot of the concession end.
Yeah.
But like you said, about forty by forty.
Yeah. And was that the area that was later taped off, barricaded?
It was the area that was taped off last spring. And then this season, it was problematic for.
Oh, even then. Even after Dallas did, still couldn't be used.
Well, that's why I think Dallas was saying, we need to fill that in there to raise it up and reseed it, so it'll bump over there.
Ideally, you would like to have the whole field rolled around so that it would all rain. But I think what Dallas was saying in the short term is this is crucial.
Yeah.
For the reasons Sean just brought up, that with the heavy rain you get, and my daughter graduated last year, but I've seen her playing water this deep. I mean, literally water mid-shin deep down there. And that's not good for anybody.
I think not. Anyway, Greg, you know, we can see what we can think. But those were two of the things you brought to us. One is the road, you've already discussed that, and, you know, we know what you say there, the cost of development. And then there's this as far as being able to do this. Bill Limmel and I, we were talking about how maybe we could save money and do this in a cheaper way, but maybe we're agreeing.
Well, I think what he's, what Bill just told me, and I agree with him on the, where the football field is the new football field. Over in that bottom there, there is a long topsoil there. But like I say, it's not something you want to go in there and dig with a bike or you want to take a dozer and just take it up and pile it up, then come in and dig it. That way you can get the good stuff.
That's what Mr. Limmel was saying. That's what Mr. Limmel was saying.
But wouldn't, I mean, realistically, wouldn't the first thing you need to do be determine qua- quantity of dirt we think we need to fill it? And probably cheaper to buy the dirt.
That's what I'm saying.
And have it all in, and to get a dozer and a bucket and a dump truck, and the people operating to scoop up six inches and load it and transport it.
I got thirty ton of topsoil, it's going to be a lot cheaper, two thousand dollars is roughly what I'm thinking, versus, uh, what the rental and everything else in the time, that's what, that's my biggest thing, is time. We don't, we don't have the luxury of having time on.
If they come in here and, and you buy the topsoil and they come in and they dump there, then what happens to it next, or we, do we have the ability to?
Uh, you know, according to how bad it is, it's, it's whether or not, you know, you want to tamper in and tamp it down, and then drag it, I think that's, if, if you want to do it right, that's the way you need to do it. Is, is to rent, rent that equipment, level it off, and then tamp it, and then when, right before you seed it, you're going to drag it with like a cultivator or something, and, uh, and then fertilize and seed it. Because you just keep adding dirt, and then over, like, when you get water standards, it's going to keep settling on that. You have to tamp it in if you want to start.
Is that on school dirt yet?
Uh, I think everything is.
Well, a lot, a lot of what you're talking about though, in terms of the road, and in terms of filling or rebuilding up the lower end of that field, would use a lot, I mean, you have to tance the road when you put it in. You've got to tance that ground when, you can't just walk it in with a dozer, can you?
Well, that's the thing, if you got, this dozer might have a six fifty, um, but the field dirt we're getting, we're not getting topsoil for that, because it's going to have rock in it, it's field dirt. You, you would walk that in with a dozer, and, uh, those parts of that. And then number two, gravel and all that, the good thing about this is, we're not looking, after I got there and was able to streamline it out, we're not looking, we're going to take a little bit off that bank and bring some over. We're not looking at a lot of tamping in there, it's just a lot of leveling out and getting that, getting a good base in there, four down the road, four, whatever you want to do, even like tall roads, it costs pretty much, you want to do.
Well, my, my thought, and where I was going with this was, if you're going to do, if you're going to come up with the money to do one of these projects, if we find a way to come up with the money to do it, could you do both of them, would it be more economical to consider doing both of them at the same time? I mean, some of this work, like it or not, if you look at the athletic fields we have over there now that are nice, a lot of that work's been volunteer work. A lot of people have put a lot of time in, I know soccer parents, girl's soccer parents volunteered and built the majority of the concession stand dressing room that's there, I know, because I was there helping them, numerous weekends. You know, i- i- if we had the dirt, if we had the tamper rented, and you're going to have to bring in some dirt, field dirt to build the road, tamper rental would be what, for a week? I mean, shouldn't be, I, what cost, what does it cost with?
It's not even much as a dozer, I have a check, but I'm saying about half the price per dozer for a week. I'm talking about, I'm not talking about a tamper you're going to run by hand, I'm talking about a roller.
Right, a roller.
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about something that's going to do something right now.
Well, I, I agree, but, uh, I mean, I'm betting that if we could find a way to get the dirt in there that Dallas needs, and potentially the tamper to put it in place, and the engineering to determine the levels the dirt needs to be to drain, that Dallas could come up with volunteers who could both run the tamper and do anything else that needed to be done. In order to have a field that we can actually play on, you know, and have a round robin, for lack of a better term, where, you know, we don't have to cancel three games because of rain and we have needy water. But, but I, I don't know how, I don't know, just, there's so many things we need to do, we'd like to do, and finances are always the limiting factor. But would it be economical to get, more economical to get the field dirt, get the topsoil, fix the field at the same time? Or is it all coming from stones anyway, so, you know, it, it, it's a.
It's all, you know, the current price is down, is, uh, best price I'm getting right now is, uh, Huntington San Diego, we're giving it the best price of anybody, anybody around here, or anybody that's, uh, Adams, Gascoigne, so that's, that's where it's been going. It'd be to just bring a truck out, I mean, that's all. And then the tamper would probably be, it'd be totally for that project, not be necessarily for this project, but.
Okay. This looks like all, either or, or both, or springtime or pre-spring jobs, okay? Let's see where we are financially, when we reach that point after Mr. Ellis finishes his thing, he's going to tell us where we stand today. Where are we going to be in March? Then in March, we can decide if we want to, you know, take on either or, both of these jobs, if we have the money. We, that might not even be a possibility, or it might, you know, something can happen. But, you know, you've kind of gotten our thoughts on what we'd like to eventually see on both of those projects, and that's all I've tried to.
I think if you're going to do the soccer field, and you are committed to doing, to making that soccer field better, then you're going to have to crown that field. You're never going to get water on a level field to stay off that field, it's going to have to be, need to come in and crown the field and bring it where that water will go off of that field.
Well, I agree with you, but.
And again, that's something that takes money, and then, based on, I think if you're going to do it, we need to do it that way.
We'll see, uh, where we, where it leads to. Okay, anything else on maintenance?
I think we.
I'm afraid to ask it. Don't say anything to him, Bill. Don't get him going on that note now. Okay. Anybody have any questions for members about maintenance, we've heard, oh, good news, we need to hear, you missed me, I have hers. Okay, let's move to Mr. Ellis then.
Bad the world, pure anger.
I'm going to try to be more cheerful than Greg.
Good luck on that one.
Greg softened him up. Yeah, you softened him up, Bill, buddy.
Y'all have already taken all my punchlines and my phone remarks and everything, I'll leave off, I'm going to speak.
I think you need to re-state that.
Okay, Happy Halloween, I'm trying to go, we're coordinating here, of course, they're more blue, we should have coordinated black and orange. Well, Greg was supposed to bring the candy.
We don't have the money to buy Halloween candy, go on.
I'm going to give it to my whole body.
No candy for you, that's right.
No candy, freeze the candy, no. What I tried to do, I don't have everything carried over yet, I'm still working on that, it was a lot quicker last year because Birdie was with me a lot longer, and she's been in Florida for a while, and, uh, so I'm trying to do this on my own, it's taking me a little bit longer, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, before I close, October, financially, I'll have all that done, so that when we look at October financial statements, the carryovers will be there, so there wasn't any use for me to print out balance sheets and all that other stuff, because it would have just been stuff that happened since July, and one of the key things that I always look at when I look at our balance sheet is the cash balance, and it scared me the other day. I learned this the hard way, I looked at the cash balance, I looked at the balance sheet of two thousand eighteen, and most of our money was not there. And I thought, oh, I gotta go back and add seventeen's the numbers in, so, what I did on this sheet was I put the cash balance as of today, and then I put the cash balance as of last year, the same day. So we're down about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from where we were at last year. Now, that looks really good, but right now, we're, we're heavy on receiving state aid, and we haven't spent it yet. So we're getting, you know, two million dollars a month, and we're not spending out quite that much, but as the year goes on, we'll start spending that money. That will drop three million dollars really easy by the time we get into January, February.
Did it drop three million dollars really easily last year by the time we come into January, February also?
Yes.
Okay.
It really, that's how I'm able to tell you that, because February came, and I was like, oh, where'd all my money go? And it went, because we were paying bills and paying people, and.
So it's not, it's not, we're not in an abnormal spending pattern this year compared to last year?
No, and, and, and Birdie was really good at keeping records from year to year in spreadsheets, so I can go back two and three years and see where we're at. And where we're at now is better than what we were five years ago, but not as good as four years ago. You know, so I, I can see that, it's nothing abnormal, it's going to happen, we just haven't started that, school year's really just started, we'll start spending a lot of that money. I'm going to do a drawdown as soon as this meeting's over for federal funds, it's the last day I could do it for funds that were for your school year sixteen. And, uh, so that'll bring in a little bit more money, I'm not in a panic about the money, we're good, we had a million and a half more than that a, a month ago, so, which was the highest, I think, I'd seen. Uh, mentioning about the budgets, their tax revenue, when you look at what I put on here, it looks like we're even with last year, and I think we've caught up, we had a good October. September, we were really down, and I would, you know, and I've expressed to you how I was worried about, you know, the projections from the, the Sheriff's Department, the Assessor's Office. I'm still not real confident that we're going to stay on that pace that we had last year. You know, we're supposed to be a million, I don't know, I mean, two hundred and forty-three thousand below, the original levy call, whenever the excess levy was loaded on several years ago. I don't look for our November to be as good as what our October is, it's just, our August, September was just so far down below, and all of a sudden, October, we had a little bit better intake, but, you know, we get, we get tax money from various assorted things, it's not really necessarily related to property tax, sometimes those can go up or down. Um, last year, we had a lot of money came in from IRP, uh, and utilities from the Sheriff's Office, we may not get that money this year, so you just don't know. And obviously, with what Mr. Gosney had just talked about, we can't get happy with anything. Anything we got coming in, it's, it's eventually going to go out, probably to fund one of our projects. And I even got on there the, the balance for what the excess levy collections were, and they're, they're right even with what they were last year. And last year was up from the previous year, but it was down from the previous year before that, so, you know, there's, there's not a, there's not really a, a pattern that says we're going to go up or down, but just given the situation in Southern West Virginia, I just don't see us collecting everything that we collected last year. And I don't think anybody else in the county expects that, you know, if you talk to people at the courthouse. The major improvement, uh, balance seems to be a hot topic. That money, anything in it, that, that, I show you a balance there, and I mentioned some other things, I think, that kind of startled you at the beginning, but if you remember, we had funds for, uh, an athletic CD, you know, we had funds in an athletic CD, we, we've used that money, and that's why some of this now has to start coming out of the major improvement fund, if you will. So that money, I'm just going to cash, you know, we, we got to sit in a bank, it's already been used.
Are you talking about the two hundred thousand bucks for the football field?
Yes.
Your commission and your board's match?
Yeah.
That was in the CD or something?
Yes, and that money's.
That's gone, okay.
That counts, you're right, so.
And move that on, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's gone, so, um, when you take what we have today, which is over, you know, roughly about four hundred fifty, four hundred sixty thousand dollars, I have not had to take out that SBA money yet, the hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's going to be our match, I'll do that shortly, I'll go ahead and make that project. And then hopefully, if we're successful, next month, and then I guess in December, when they award the money, we're going to have to have two hundred thousand dollars as a cash match on, hopefully, what is a new SBA project to put the roofs on. Gun Valley, Midway, Ranger, Duval, Hamlin, right? If, you, you may think, well, if we don't get that, then we, we got two hundred thousand dollars in there, no, we have to start putting roofs on these buildings. We have to figure out what, you know, we've prioritized these, these, this project, and what we think is worst, and that money, if we don't get the SBA money, we're going to spend a lot more, two hundred thousand dollars, just, just like that, it's going to be really fast, so.
On roofs, throw more at a time or something.
Yes, one, yeah, we'll, we'll have to figure out what we're going to be able to do. The balance I had on here with all this together is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and then, that's where I was going to talk to you about the Midway building, but Greg already did that, so that's not even taking that into account or anything else that may come up, and, and we were originally talking about a hundred thousand dollars for Duval. Well, that just got shot all to pieces the other day.
Okay, let me ask you now, we get two hun- we had two hundred thousand dollars a year that goes into capital improvement?
Not this year, we didn't.
Okay.
We only had eighty-five because of the.
Oh, you took some of that? Okay, but now this four hundred and sixty-six that you got here, that is from past?
Yeah, that's from money we had spent.
allocations, that wasn't used, right? Okay, so normally, ideally, we had two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
But this year, you're only putting in eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
So we spent a hundred and fifteen thousand or two hundred?
No, or, we had to take a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars out of the, the excess levy, because they said, you're just not going to get that money. And so when we talked, we figured we would take it out of, uh, funds that didn't affect everyday life of people at workforce or kids, so urban improvement, staff development money that we didn't need, that came out, uh, the insurance cost went, went up, so we had to calculate that in, but, yeah, it was roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
You're counting something, somebody can't change those. Okay, so this is the money that we have for capital improvement of any kind, building, repair, or anything else, right? Or at Midway, uh, the annex building, we hopefully will get one day. So you're saying we have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and then whatever the Midway annex building cost will be, will come from that?
Yes.
Do you have a rough deal for that, Greg? Just, I'll copy, not precise, but.
About eighty, aren't we?
Yeah, I said, between seventy and ninety thousand is what the quotes have been coming in for delivery and setup.
So if we take, so you're, then we're talking about, we have thirty thousand dollars if we do that project, I mean, I'm guesstimating here, right?
Yeah, it'd be somewhere, probably a little bit less.
Thirty thousand dollars for capital improvement of any kind?
For the rest of the year.
For the rest of the year, and you don't know what the tax valuations are going to be for next year, you know, or, we, we may have to really make some tough decisions later on this year on how we want to budget the money that we're going to be receiving.
Well, and that's why I say some of these things we talked about earlier.
We don't want a chiller to go down like at West Hamlin earlier.
Don't mention the word chiller, that's six figures, right?
So, you know.
Mr. Wilkerson has a question here.
You pulled the architectural fees out, and before you did the, uh, final balance, they're, they're gone, they're not part of the needs there of the eleven thousand, or a hundred and eleven thousand?
No, the one eleven.
It's already pulled from.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's already been taken that out.
Everything I mentioned there leads down to that hundred and eleven.
To that, okay.
And, and this could be off somehow by just the fact that maybe I didn't see any encumbrance or something like that that I needed to add to that. Um, that threw me off a couple of weeks ago, and I was trying to calculate this. There was, there was, I can't remember the amount of the encumbrance, but it, it threw me off, so that could change tomorrow, but it's not going to change a, a huge amount, so.
But if, if Greg has a heating issue at some school, and he has to have someone come in or they have to repair it, it's going to come from this thirty thousand dollars?
Yep, yeah, that could happen.
We're going to realistically, I don't, you know, I know I'm always doing a loom, but you're, you're basically allocating this two hundred thousand dollars as a potential match against the SBA money for the roofing project. In a horrible situation, if this SBA project does come through, and we have to provide the matching fund, that's not actually going to take effect, or what, next spring? We wouldn't have that money to do the roofing projects, we wouldn't start the roofing projects until when?
I'm not sure when they hand out the money.
It is in the spring.
So, I mean, uh.
Hearts, I believe it's in hearts.
As a, but, but do we have to pledge, set that money aside when the SBA grants that money? Or do we just have to have it available by date certain?
You, you can't pledge that money unless you have it.
Well, but that's what I'm saying.
Just set it aside, you have to be ready to.
We do have to set it aside as a condition of applying for the grant, and say that we'll, we have the money, we'll set it aside if you give us this money. And it has to be when we submit it?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have this?
No, that money's on there.
As an emergency fund that we make up somewhere else until we do the roofing project, okay?
All right, Ray.
So, well, now, you can pick my curiosity, okay? One of you all needs to tell me where, where we're going to come up with out of the budget, or out of somebody's budget, out of everybody's budget, what do we do? If we, if all these things happen, we spend eighty to ninety grand on the Midway modular, and we have thirty grand, and the chiller at the high school goes down, and we need a hundred and twenty grand, where's it come from?
Um, we have a carryover amount that we talked about at the end of last month. And I think our carryover was what, nine, nine seventy-seven, nine, I think nine seventy-seven? But as I explained at that meeting, it takes about one day to figure out that you've used four hundred thousand in that towards the end of the year. So if we have to hire people, or, you know, that, that money's there for drastic emergency, I would not recommend taking that money out and doing anything.
You're talking about four hundred and some thousand, not nine hundred, right?
Well, our, our carryover was four seventy-seven last year, it was nine, almost five hundred thousand dollars more, because, you know, like I said, we'd. Because, you know, like I said, we'd watched our budgets. That, that's there, but that's gonna be used to, to pay teachers. We're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna hire more teachers throughout the course of the year. And that's what that money's gonna have to be.
So, hiring three, I'm looking at here on bill sheet, we're adding, adding three right now and...
We've already added those three.
So, how many more we add?
Well, that happens, and then Greg's working on all this stuff.
Why, no.
He's gonna overspend his budget. It's just gonna happen. It happened last year. It's gonna happen this year.
Because Greg's doing a lot of great things and, and we're getting about ten dollars worth out of every six dollars we spend with Greg, isn't it?
That wasn't a ridicule, as he said.
So, so...
I was getting ready to say about the money you took, but that...
No, see, yeah. When I took that money, I said, listen, I'm sure we're gonna have a carryover. I can put that money back. Transportation's gonna go over. I'm gonna have to put money over there. That money goes away. I did not realize how fast that money went, and it went like that. Four hundred thousand dollars is not a lot whenever you're, you know, in a billion dollar coalfield. So, you gotta figure that. That money can leave really quick. And everything that we do, you may not see it immediate on the, you know, when you're looking at your budgets. But when you look at the big picture, when everybody's together and you start looking at different line items, you know, you look at food service and transportation as a whole from all the different funds and all the different projects, we spend a lot of money and we watch our budgets. So, the fact that it was nearly five, it was four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars that I had to use of that money last year just to adjust so that I won't get any audit findings, you know, near the, the end of the year. So, you can't count on that. I don't think you can count on that.
Well, I don't wanna bank on spending, and I, I can't predict, nobody can predict that we're gonna have a major catastrophic event. But that's why we have somewhere, we have, for lack of a better term, the carryover, the rainy day fund.
Yes, you can call it that, not like that.
We're not budgeting, we're not budgeting for a catastrophic, unpredictable event. But by its very nature, they're unpredictable. You can't budget for them, and, and, but yet they happen. We never expected the chiller to go down in LCHS when it did, did we, Greg? You know, it should've had a lot longer lifespan than that.
It should've been twenty-five years on that chiller.
But, you know, we, we have to look long-term, just like you do. We can't look at what we have to spend today. We have to take into account the reality that something like that could happen. And as much as we like, as much as all of these expenditures are great expenditures, we have to keep the doors open now as well as a year down the road. So, if you, if you told me there was nothing to take care of a catastrophic event, then we had to come back and talk about some of these things.
Yeah, that's what that's there for.
Now, I agree. I said to make sure it was there, that there was something there.
I'll give you my opinion.
I don't think we should ever touch it, except in emergency situations.
The other day, when we were ZMM and Dave Ferguson came in and, and we joked about his taxfulness since this happened, he started the meeting out. He said, oh, yeah, by the way, there's no fix for that. And I can go back on ten years of working in Logan when we had a lot of money. And we would build four classrooms and a gym here at this school. And we'd go build gymnasiums over here and then we would go, you know, we spent money like crazy. And off the top of my head, I thought, well, that's eight classrooms and cafeteria. I think I was using two thousand seven numbers is what I was doing before everything went up. And I was thinking about four or four and a half million dollars. And Dave said, well, you're probably looking at them more like six to eight, I think is what he said. When he said that, that has to change the way, in, in my opinion, that you have, that you view everything from here on out. Because that school's gonna be there. You, you're not gonna be able to, to run away from that. You all may not be on the board. It may be, you know, twenty years down the road, but that building's gotta be fixed somehow. And we don't have the cash right now to do that, and I don't know how we can go about doing that. We still have accused that fund that, that, you know, that, that bond doesn't go away for another couple of years. And I don't know if you can have two at a time or, you know, how that works with the SBA. And they gotta be willing to give you money, but eight million dollars is a lot of money considering what I just told you. You know, you said we don't have five million dollars. Well, we might, but that's everybody's payroll. So, we can't exactly go build, you know, a new wing onto Duval and not pay anybody for the next few years, but...
Come on, Ray. You're doing an unencumbered. Do I have to, do we have to get into a feeling, John?
I was laughing over whatever you said. I was like, well, wait till I talk. But I, I think that has to change the way, it's gonna change the way I think. It's gonna change the way I think and everybody thinks. Because that is a problem you cannot run away from. Even if we get a second opinion, I don't think it's gonna be that different. You know, they got structural engineering guys, and I think it was a geotech that actually went out there and looked at that. They just didn't do a core drilling. And, uh, I, I think he said that there wasn't even a need to do that because they thought it was sitting on sand. And that's why it's shifting. And there wasn't a reason to tear that down and put it right back. You're gonna have to move that. And, and it's gonna be just, I, I'm, I'm becoming Debbie Downer here, I know. But that has to change the way that you think because we don't have that kind of money. And I don't think we're gonna have that kind of money in the next couple of years. So, that reserve needs to stay as a reserve until we can build that up to do what we need to do in case that that building starts shifting.
It's gonna take a lot of two hundred thousand dollar years to get...
Well, yeah.
And we only get two hundred thousand dollar a year now. There are eighty-five thousand dollar years, so...
Well, you gotta hope that, I, I don't know what to hope for. All I know is that's gonna be a problem. And, uh, you know, hopefully, I'm here for a long time, but, but that's a problem that I don't really wanna deal with. That, that, that's a problem. That's gonna be a huge problem, so.
Someone's eventually gonna have to.
But anyways, that's...
Everybody have, have anything else for Mr. Ellis?
No, I wanna ask Greg another question.
I agree.
Best case, best, did, did the people that looked at Duval give you a range, a timeframe? Any idea as to how long the school's gonna remain usable without course of the school? No predictions?
No prediction.
No one was able to give me, you know, and it was always, I go up there, why is it doing this? And I'm like, you're the engineer, you know, so, why are you asking? I, I just feel like this is something that they're, they don't, they don't know.
They don't know.
And that's why they're gonna do the monthly monitoring, right?
I, I think that's a safe thing for the school board to do and for us to do for the monthly monitoring to start with. And then we can adjust it in six months. That'll give us a baseline of, are we seeing movement or we don't?
Greg, do you have the records for the, uh, construction? It would've been about seventy-eight, seventy-nine when they did the drilling and put the filing in? Do you have those?
I sent those to them. Actually, uh, the, the engineer from, uh, from ZMM, ZMM has it. And they looked at it and we looked at it, and it says it's a sand base. And it also talks about hitting sludge in a certain foot.
Blue mud.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it said that it was not set on bedrock. It just went to so far depth and then it just sat. That's where they stopped.
Seventy-five feet, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy-five feet. It's just, it's not sand, just blue mud. It was a tremendous amount of...
Sandstone. They, they talked about being sandstone and then hitting, uh, the sludge at so many feet. And then they went on down seventy-five feet. Now, that was the one section on that lower part. The other section, like I said, there were three different sections that they dealt with. Yeah, it was interesting reading that because I'm like, why didn't you go to bedrock? And I worked CSX and everything we done, you went to bedrock. Well, you build a bridge here, you better have it bedrock. And you better have documentation, you know. He kept the legs on the file driver and you know it's a bedrock.
So, you're gonna have the same thing under the portion that was built in the sixties. Part of it was in the sixties, part of it later. You're gonna have the same thing that you had over in the east wing of the building under that one. I mean, it's not gonna change that much, it's about two hundred feet.
I was one year old then.
I was only about six or seven.
All right, well, that is gonna be an issue to find out later on down the road. Okay, Ray.
Did y'all do this deliberately today? Y'all gang up and give all this bad news and call this topic in?
Brownie, we're not, I hate walking in the door, to be honest with you. I'm like, at what point do you get tired of hearing me say something?
Oh, I'm opposed to this all too bad news. It's not like we've heard it ever.
It's kinda like I walk in the door, so I, what you gonna bring up today?
Usually you have something, usually that's...
Yeah?
Trick or treat, Doc.
Okay.
Are you, you've been tricked. Okay. Let's go on to the administrative section. Do you have a motion to look at those? On the... Brownie, second by Mr. W. All right, Mr. McGee?
And we're moving.
No bad news in here, huh?
Nope. I have a school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus shack rooms for athletic events, activities, competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, out of county student transfer for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Item C, Marshall University student Kennedy Woodhoff to complete four hundred hour senior field placement with social worker Kerry Smith at Lincoln County High School during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Item D, Southern West Virginia community and technical college student Michaela Atkins to perform observations at West Hamlin Elementary fall semester. Item A, designation of the following employee to provide specialized healthcare for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. And item F, approval to post the following new positions effective immediately. I have Tom Cook two at Lincoln County High School and a special education teacher at Harts PKD.
Okay, do you might have any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, but is that an all yes on the administrative items?
Yes.
All yes, okay. Go to finance. Have a motion, please. I'll move. Second by Larry. Ray?
Uh, schedule of invoices totaling one million, one hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. That listing is attached, but there's also the one check for twenty-one thousand, I think, six seventy-four. And we added to that amount to make it what I just told you about.
So, that's the final payment?
That's the final payment.
Is that accounted for on the field?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got all our approvals and everything's cleared and state, then that's gonna be out the door. So, you say yes.
Okay, good. All right, you might need comments, questions about finance and invoices. I've got my own. Is that an all yes vote? Personnel, motion please. I'll move. Brownie, second by Brad. Bill?
Okay, item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, employment of professional personnel pending new issuance, certification. Item C, employment of professional personnel. Item D, transfer of professional personnel pending passage of practice and issues, certification. Item E, employment of substitute service personnel. Item F, transfer of service personnel. Item G, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item H, legal absence, and item A, retirement and resignations. Okay, and if you look at the sheet, I kinda got it updated for you at one point. That is referring to, uh, we have added, including the one, the special ed that we agreed to, uh, to post. We've added three positions, but we've eliminated three this year also, professional. Uh, we are, uh, we had Cook retire effective today. So, that was at Harts and it was over Cook, so we're not replacing that. But as you see, we gotta come back and put a halftime cook at Lincoln County High School because they're under with the number they have. And one of the issues that we're running into that you're gonna, uh, we're gonna have to post a halftime aide at Lincoln County High School for special ed because we've had some other kids move in and some, some others. And, uh, and we just anticipate that to continue. I don't know if we do the best we can, but I think professional wise, I, I don't see anything jumping out there right now. But I can anticipate that we may have to add an aide or two somewhere along the way as we go on. Because we're just getting a lot more younger kids that they're coming into the county. And a lot of them through the foster care program that, that's, uh, that's gonna cause us to do that.
Did you say, was it someone else, that, that twenty percent of the students were required special ed services? Did I hear that?
What, what percent do we have? Twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one percent special ed now?
Child count for October first was seven ninety-seven.
And what percent?
What was our final number?
Uh, it's thirty-four something.
I think it was thirty-four fifty.
I think it's better around...
That's over twenty percent.
It's over twenty.
That's what I'm saying, that we, some work we are getting.
That number, we, you know, I was saying that, that number, that continues to increase. Losing overall enrollment, our special education enrollment continues to encourage. As a train across Southern West Virginia, everyone see you.
But I'll, I'll just share this little tidbit real quick. Last week, I was at a conference for personnel directors and, and I'll just, uh, several states, I'll share it later. But the interesting one was where there's such a teacher shortage in Alabama, if you have a high school diploma or a GED, you could go out and teach certain classes, like, and, uh, professor, that teacher. We're not there yet.
And become professor, aren't we?
Yeah, but you could go out and it's just, and just one other little tidbit about the teacher shortage. Let me get to that. Uh, this was a study conducted by UCLA over five decades of the nation's incoming freshman class. Nineteen seventy-three, thirteen point two percent were in the field of education. Two thousand fifteen, four point two percent were in education. I mean, it's every state. This Arizona, fifty-two percent of their teachers are not qualified. So, it's, we're not concerned. It really is. I just wanted to share that.
All right. Anything personnel, do you have any questions, Carol?
I'll need to recuse myself probably from Jesus, since my son is on there.
Okay, let's go down to item G on the personnel list. Uh, item G, see, you said G.
Number nine.
Okay, okay, Sean Smith, I mean, number nine. So, um, Carol wants to recuse herself from that particular item, but take pardon in the rest of them. Is that true, Carol? Okay, so is that an all yes vote except for the refusal of, I can't even talk now, of, uh, Carol on item nine? Of, uh, item G, item number nine. Yeah, that's true? Vote, oh, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's go to comments concerned. This is gonna have an executive session here. Will there be anything for general public before we do that? Anything other than the things we talked about? Mr. McGee, anything other than this one topic?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have one item here. Mr. McGee, do you need to send that to your request man?
I request that we enter into an executive session for the discussion of a legal option for the purchase of property, possible purchase of property.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
You do.
Mr. Baker made the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by, I think Larry's dead heat.
That's okay.
Larry just barely knows you, Carol. Second to do that. So, two twenty-eight, the board's gonna go into executive session to discuss a possible contractual arrangement.